Good afternoon. I'd like to call the board the annual reorganization meeting. Today is Monday, January 1st, 2024, 12:00 p.m., and we are in the historic Sussex County courthouse. The roll call for Commissioner Carney?
Here.
Commissioner Hayden?
Here.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Here.
Commissioner Space?
Here.
Commissioner Elect DeGroot?
Here.
At this time, I'd like to invite Father Philip and Laura up for invocation and moment of silent prayer.
In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen. Lord Jesus, we begin this new year coming before you to receive your blessings and to be inspired by you to serve the people of Sussex County in all those ways that they need, all those ways that are going to be beneficial for building up a community strong in faith, hope, and love. We also ask you, Lord Jesus, to bless these commissioners, to bless all the other servants of Sussex County in their many different offices and functions. We ask you to bless this county itself and all of its inhabitants, that we might be able to strive in a very special way to engender peace and joy in the hearts and minds of all. And we ask this through you, Lord Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
And if you could please remain standing where the salute is black.
Our allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our public statement pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, P.L. 1975, adequate notice as defined by Section 3B of Chapter 231, P.L. 1975, has been made on December 28, 2023, as per authorization of the Board and for notice which was posted from the administrative offices of the County of Sussex located in the Administrative Center on Spring Street, New Jersey, to the following: New Jersey Herald, New Jersey Sunday Herald, also posted on the bulletin board maintained in the Administrative Center for public announcements and submitted to the Sussex County Clerk in compliance with said act. At this time, I ask that you please use all of your electronic devices. Okay, next we have our county clerk, Jeffrey M. Parrott, for his determination statement from the November 7th, 2023 election.
Thank you, Christina. Thank you for everybody coming out today. I'm sure the commissioners appreciate it as I do. We have a statement of determination, a statement of determination of the Board of County Canvassers relative to an election held in the County of Sussex and State of New Jersey for the election of certain officers for the county on the seventh day of November 2023. The said Board does determine that at the said election, the following officers have been duly elected. Number one, Gary Chisano, County surrogate, term five years. Number two, Jack DeGroot, County Commissioner, three-year term. Were duly elected to the office and for the term above said forth. I do hereby certify that the foregoing is true, full and correct statement of the determination of Board of Canvassers and therein mentioned, and witness whereof I have heretofore set my hand this 21st day of November 2023. Jeffrey M. Parrott, County Clerk; Deborah Wirths, Chairperson, Board of County Canvassers. I, Jeffrey Parrott, County Clerk of Sussex County, do hereby certify that the foregoing is true, full and correct copy of the statement of determination of the Board of County Canvassers relative to an election held in the county or regional district thereof on the date herein noted for certain officers, and certify thereto appended as fully and entirely as the same remains on file in my office, sworn and attested, Jeffrey M. Parrott, County Clerk, Sussex County, New Jersey. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, at this time, I'd like Commissioner Elect Jack DeGroot to come up to be sworn in as a member of the Sussex County Board of County Commissioners by Senator-elect Assemblyman Parker Space for a three-year term, set the term to begin immediately and expire December 31st, 2026.
I, Captain DeGroot, do solemnly swear. You solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. I will support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey. And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey. I will bear truth, faith, and allegiance. I will bear truth, faith, and allegiance. To the same. To the same. And the governments established. And the governments established. In the United States. In the United States. And in this state. And in this state. Under the authority of the people. Under the authority of the people. I will perform the duties. I will perform the duties. Of Sussex County Commissioner for a three-year term. Of Sussex County Commissioner for a three-year term. Faithfully and impartially. And faithfully and impartially. And justly. And justly. To the best of my ability. To the best of my ability. So help me God.
Okay, now at this time, we have a nomination to appoint a Director for the Board of County Commissioners for 2024.
Yes, I make the motion to nominate Commissioner Jill Space for Commissioner Director.
Do I have a second?
I will second that.
Okay, any discussion? Are they all in favor? Any opposed? Any abstained? Congratulations, Commissioner Space as our Director for 2024. Senator?
I, Jill Space.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will.
That I will.
Support the Constitution.
Support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of New Jersey.
Of the State of New Jersey.
That I will.
That I will.
Bear.
Bear.
True faith.
True faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments.
And to the governments.
Established.
Established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority.
Under the authority.
Of the people.
Of the people.
And I will.
And that I will.
Perform.
Perform.
The duties of.
The duties of.
Director of the Board of County Commissioners.
Director of the Board of County Commissioners.
Faithfully.
Faithfully.
And partially.
And partially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I would like to nominate Chris Carney. Okay, and I would like to second that nomination. Do I have any other nominations? All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations.
State of New Jersey, County of Sussex, I, Christopher Carney. State of New Jersey, County of Sussex, I, Christopher Carney. Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I will support. I will support. The Constitution. Constitution. Of the United States. Of the United States. And the Constitution. Constitution. Of the State of New Jersey. Of the State of New Jersey. That I will bear. I will bear. True faith and allegiance. True faith and allegiance. To the same. To the same. And to the governments. To the governments. Established. Established. In the United States. In the United States. And in this state. And in this state. Under the authority. Under the authority. Of the people. And that I will. And that I will. Perform. Perform. The duties of. The duties of. Deputy Director of the Board of County Commissioners. Deputy Director of the Board of County Commissioners. Okay, if you didn't say that right, you're gonna get it together. Faithfully. Faithfully. And partially. And partially. And justly. And justly. To the best of my ability. To help me God. Congratulations.
Okay, item nine, approval of agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
It's a move.
Commissioner Carney, Deputy Commissioner Carney approves it. And a second? Second. Commissioner Fantasia. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That carries, motion carries. I want to recognize some of the dignitaries. We have Senator Steve Orojo, Assemblyman Parker Space, County Clerk Jeff Parrott, Surrogate Gary Chisano, Commissioner Board. We have Sussex County Acting Prosecutor Carolyn Murray. We have former freeholder Jonathan Rose. We have Frankfurt Mayor Dave Silverthorne, Hope Con Councilman Ryan Smith, Lafayette Committee Man Alan Henderson, Hope Con Mayor Elect Marie Corate. We have Hope Con Council Woman Elect Jennifer Johnson and Hope Con Council Woman Elect Rachel Rodriguez. And hopefully I didn't forget anyone. Okay, and now we're gonna go to Commissioner Comments, and we will start with our newest Commissioner, Commissioner Jackie Group. Welcome.
Glory to God, and a Happy New Year to each and every one of you. I stand sit before you today with a deep gratitude of my heart and a sense of responsibility that is both humbling and exhilarating. First and foremost, I want to express my thanks to my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, for guiding me on this journey and allowing me to become before you today as Sussex County's newest Commissioner. I extend my heartfelt appreciation to family, friends, colleagues, and all of you who have gathered here today to show your unwavering support. Your presence today is a testament to the strength of our community and the shared commitment we have here for the future of Sussex County. It is truly a blessing to stand before you in this position, ready to bring energy and effort that Sussex County deserves. I'm committed to revitalizing our farmland preservation program and ensuring the prosperity of our agricultural heritage here. As of today, we are actively engaged in preserving farmland across five different farms, one in collaboration with the state, three through nonprofit partnerships, and one with the county planning incentive grant. I appreciate the responsibility to inherit and overlook these farms during my tenure, along with my fellow commissioners. However, I recognize the potential for enhancement in this program. I believe the key to improvement lies in outreach, specifically person-to-person engagement. Over the next year, my plan is to improve, optimize, and enhance person-to-person interactions with farmers and provide comprehensive information about Sussex County's farmland preservation program and other agricultural services. For the past few years, Sussex County has only had two applications per year for farms to enter farmland preservation. Now, through this heightened outreach effort, my goal will be to double this number in the first year. Subsequently, in the following years, I aim to grow the number of applications per year and increase our average number of applications annually for our county's farmland preservation program. Now, while preserving farmland is crucial, we also have to focus on preserving farmers, right? Without farmers, there is no farmland. And more importantly, no farmers, no food. So always remember that. In the upcoming year, I'm eager to contribute to the preservation of Sussex County's farmers and our agricultural heritage by actively seeking opportunities and supporting agricultural programs at Sussex County Community College and Sussex County Technical School. Each of these county educational resources offer a distinctive path to enhance the sustainability of our agricultural community and contribute to the overall improvement of Sussex County. Beyond my involvement in agriculture, I'm excited about the opportunity to collaborate with the Department of Health and Human Services in the upcoming year. Specifically, my focus is on actively contributing to the support and improvement of programs offered by the Division of Senior Services. Whether it pertains to nutritional programs or caregiver support, it is imperative that we take care of the well-being of those who have paved the way before us. I'm confident that with the guidance of this exceptional Commissioner Board I am becoming part of, we will work as one to identify and address county-wide issues. Together, we will work in unity to overcome challenges, ensuring the well-being and prosperity of Sussex County. I want to thank you all once again for your trust and support as Sussex County's newest Commissioner. May God bless Sussex County, all of you, and may this new year, 2024, bring more, more prosperity, unity, and success to all of us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Keep mine short and sweet, because others may run long. Thank you, everybody, for coming. Merry Christmas, happy holidays. I look forward to the energy our new Commissioner brings, forward to working as our new Director and Deputy Director, in making the county a more affordable place to live and working on the fact that government needs to improve every day. And that is our goal, and I'm sure we will accomplish that. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Fantasia?
Bill, I feel targeted. I think that was directed at me to say someone might be long-winded. I don't know about all that.
Chris and I are hoping to win it back.
All right. Challenge accepted. Okay, so first I'd like to start by thanking some really great people here at the county: Ron Tappin, Christina Marx, Elka Yetter, Bill Copenol, Lorraine Hens, Christine Florio, also our constitutional officers, Jeff Parrott, Mike Strata, and Gary Chisano. Our D-24 current legislative team of Senator Orojo and Assemblyman Wirths and Assemblyman Space, they have all played an integral part in my time at the county over the past five years, and I thank them for everything that they do for the county. Five years ago, I sat before you and I joined this Board, and today is going to be the last time that I sit before you. In nine days, I will assume my place at the New Jersey State Legislature. And I just would like to reflect just a little bit on some of the guiding principles that helped move this Board forward. We've always had our roots in reality. We've always prioritized the needs of the county without compromising fiscal responsibility. We've always differentiated needs versus wants, and this core principle, it's not only at the county, it's at the municipal level, and it should be at the state level. There is always a need to provide safe and clean communities. There is always a need to provide safe and structurally sound roads and bridges, a need for clear and concise communication, because in essence, government is the customer service business, and those who elect us are the customers, and it is our duty to serve. There is a need for ethical and open practice in everything we do. There's a need to provide comprehensive health and human services, a lesson that I learned quite well as the Director and Deputy Director during the pandemic. We can never turn a blind eye to our senior citizens and our veterans, which are often sadly forgotten in this state and across the country. There's a need to appreciate and recognize the hard work put forth by the county employees. They are our unsung heroes. There's a need to keep communication open between District 24 legislators as they push at the state level, and again, another important lesson I learned as the liaison to District 24, to see how all decisions, quite frankly, are local decisions. Everything starts at the local level. Every decision that's made federally, statewide, countywide, will all trickle down into our towns. It's very important to never forget that piece. So this is a little bit bittersweet for me to leave. I have enjoyed my time as various liaison appointments across the county. I want to thank everybody who guided me and helped me, also the District 24 Legislative Office team. I know Jeff Spatola is here, and thank you. You've always had your pulse on what the county needs, and your frequent meetings with Ron Tappin made it very easy for us to get information as to how state politics was impacting the county. I'm looking forward to working with this Board. My time here is not over. We can address all of these priorities through prioritized spending and by always letting our moral compass guide us. I know my replacement will be selected to serve out the remaining year of my term, and I hope and pray that that person is always also guided by their moral compass, always putting people first, always prioritizing needs versus wants, and knowing that every decision that they make, they need to go home and put their head on the pillow that night, knowing that they did the very best that they could in service of the people of Sussex County. So those are my comments. I don't know who won this bet with the over-under, but I'm going to stop it there, and I just, I thank the voters, I thank all of you. Thank you for coming here on New Year's Day and joining us to start out. I'm going to enjoy every last day of my nine days left here with the Board, and God bless all of you. Happy New Year. Thank you.
Deputy Director Carney?
Wow, always a tough act to follow. Well, thank you all for coming and for the continued support for this Commissioner Board. Almost three years ago, I joined this Board, and after Commissioner Fantasia takes oath in the State Assembly, I'll be your Senior Commissioner. Pretty quick, not only has this Board changed such short time, the county has changed as well. We have tightened our belts on administrative level, cut positions where necessary, and implemented new procedures to help the county run effectively and efficiently. As County Commissioners, we answer to you, the residents of Sussex County, and this Board makes it a priority to make sure we stay in the loop on all business that happens here at the county. I'm often seen in numerous county buildings, meeting with staff, working with Boards and various goals, and with doing this, this gives me the insight and understanding how we can better the job that we do here at the county. A year ago, I personally set goals, much of which has been accomplished, and others that this Board is still working toward finalizing. I assure you, we will not stop working on these goals. We have a new Administrator, as well as a new position of Deputy Administrator, as well as a new position of Chief of Staff, which in my eyes was the missing component of communication for day-to-day activity in the county. I'm proud to say that these changes gave us the ability to give our frontline county workers one of the best contracts they've seen in 15 years. This Board continues to work toward paying off county debt and keeping tax increases to a minimum, putting Sussex County in a very good place. I want to express my gratitude for our county employees, along with Sheriff Strata, County Clerk Jeff Parrott, Surrogate Gary Chisano. Without them, our job becomes more difficult. With that being said, I want to congratulate Mr. Jack DeGroot and look forward to his younger, different outlook on things. Just want to say I was the youngest before you got here, okay? I was. I had it for a year, and now I don't. I want to congratulate Mike Ganemore, Dawn Fantasia, Parker Space, on their appointments in the state, and Dawn, we're very close, personally and figuratively. You know, you always had my back, and I appreciate that. And I know you're gonna do good in the state. We're gonna miss you, but it's not gonna be goodbye, right? Because we're gonna work in-hand. But our relationship has grown, you've done a lot, and I appreciate what you did. I'm gonna leave it at that, because I don't want to have to stub my toe. Where am I at? Oh, again, thank you all for coming. You know, we work hard here on the Commissioner Board. It's not easy. I want to thank my wife and my kids. It takes a lot of time doing what we do, and sometimes that takes away from your family. But Sussex County is our family, so I appreciate everybody for coming, and thank you, and that's all I have.
Thank you, and welcome to the reorganization of the 2024 Sussex County Board of Commissioners. I would first like to thank Senator Steve Orojo for swearing me in today. His service to Sussex County over the last two decades, oh, there he is, over the last two decades has been remarkable. Thank you. Thank you to my husband for all his love, support, and advice, and of course, to my children and grandson for being here today and supporting me always. To my fellow commissioners, thank you for entrusting me with leading the Commissioner Board in 2024. As I enter my third calendar year, not actually third year, but third calendar year on the Board, I am committed to doing all I can to keep Sussex County moving forward in a challenging economic climate. The 2023 Board has done all we possibly could to keep taxes as low as possible. All five Commissioners had the opportunity to sit in on budget meetings with the various departments within the county. That will continue with our 2024 Commissioner Board. Our department heads have been doing a stellar job presenting the needs in a most cost-effective way without compromising the services our residents have come to expect from the county. None of this could be done without each of our dedicated county employees. I will continue to have an open line of communication for the county employees, as well as being very accessible to our residents. I'm always just a phone call away. To that point, one of my goals this year is to bring a more user-friendly experience to our county website. Agendas, bill lists, meeting minutes need to be posted where they can easily be found and within a timely manner. Another goal is to distribute the remainder of the American Rescue Act, ARPA funds, towards any capital projects we can. Deputy Director Chris Carney and I will be meeting on that in the very near future. Keeping our infrastructure from disrepair is of high importance. Now that the county has entered into a long-term agreement with Morris County Corrections, offloading the jail would be beneficial. I would like to personally welcome Commissioner Jack DeGroot. I look forward to working alongside of him. Commissioner Fantasia, as your five years on the Board come to a close, I want to say your dedication and commitment to this county and this Board has been exceptional. I will personally miss your presence. I've had the pleasure of not only calling you a colleague, but also a friend. I look forward to seeing you fight for Sussex County down in Trenton while representing Legislative District 24. The person chosen to fill your seat later this month will have some big shoes to fill. No one can make a mosquito report as interesting as you can. Good luck. Make us proud.
Thank you.
I want to wish everyone a happy and healthy New Year. I'm also inviting everyone here to celebrate with us after this at O'Reilly's, and I want to thank all our elected officials for contributing, Assemblyman Parker Space, Assemblywoman Elect Dawn Fantasia, Assemblyman Elect Mike Ganemore, Sheriff Mike Strata, Surrogate Gary Chisano, County Clerk Jeff Parrott, Commissioners myself, Chris Carney, Bill Hayden, and Jack DeGroot. So we hope you'll all join us afterwards at O'Reilly's. Can I get an approval of the agenda? Oh, I already did that part, sorry. Proclamations? We have none. A public session from the floor. This public session is for questions or comments pertaining to agenda items only. Comments are limited to three minutes or less. Please state your name, municipality, and agenda topic. Can I get a motion to open the floor for public comment for agenda items only? So moved. Okay, Fantasia, Commissioner Fantasia makes the motion, and Commissioner Hayden seconds it. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, open the floor. Anyone? Agenda topics on. Okay, I need a motion to close the floor for Commissioner, not Commissioner.
Public, public.
Public session, public comments.
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Carney and Commissioner Hayden. Okay, approval of consent agenda. We have Items A through Items Q. Can I get a motion?
Sondance. Second.
Okay, we have Commissioner Hayden makes the motion, and Commissioner DeGroot seconds it. Roll call. Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Director Space?
Yes.
Okay, appointments. We have Resolution A, reapportment of William Joseph as the official town prior for the County of Sussex for 2024, and Resolution B, appointment of Carrie Sylvester as public agency compliance officer in and for the County of Sussex for calendar year 2024 pursuant to public law 1975, C-127, NJAC 17:27. Can I get a motion to adopt Appointments A Debate?
So moved.
Commissioner Carney and Commissioner Hayden, roll call. Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Director Space?
Yes.
Item 15, Resolutions. We have none. Item 16, awards of contract change bid orders, none. But number 17, public session from the floor. Please note, everyone is asked to keep their comments to three minutes or less. Please state your name and municipality. Can I get a motion to open the floor for public comment? So moved. Commissioner Fantasia makes the motion, and Commissioner Hayden seconds it. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, floor is open if anyone wants to make any comments. Okay, floor is open if anyone wants to make any comments. Yes.
Candace Smith, Resident of HOPACon, Vice Chair, Sussex County Community College, Board of Justies. Want to thank Dawn Fantasia for your service to our county and now for our state. We're so proud and excited for what you have in store. Jack DeGroot, we look forward to all you're going to bring to the Commissioner Board, and I'm really excited about the mention of Sussex County Community College. I love our school. I look forward to working closely with the Commissioner Board to make Sussex County Community College and continue to keep it as the jewel of our county. So thank you, good luck to everyone, God bless.
Thank you, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, as for motion to close the open floor.
So moved.
Okay, Commissioner Hayden makes the motion, and a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Carney. Okay. Number 18, reminders. Oh.
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, passes. It's closed. Okay, number 18, reminders. Please visit the county website for all meeting dates and times, www.sussex nj.us. Number 19, is a German. Can I get a motion to adjourn the meeting? And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you all.